We have submitted to the state and you know by law, our financials are to be audited by independent auditors to confirm the accounts. And tonight, we have our independent auditors who came and audited us. It was Kuzak and Company. We have Jim Kuzak and John Topalowski. They are here. They're gonna present the findings and answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. I think I talked about this in the past years, but our job... Our job is to audit your basic financial statements and your federal programs to make sure that there are no material misstatements in the financials. To make sure that you're complying with laws and regulations that govern over the federal programs. And we also do an audit of your Department of Transportation, New York State Transportation funds as part of our required responsibilities here. We spend the better part of three weeks with four CPAs. Initially, we look at your internal control systems and document those systems and make sure there are no changes and that they're operating properly. We then focus on the year end. That's typically a couple of weeks in March where we go through all the city's funds, your various fund balances, the various operating results, which are incorporated in the 58-page document that you see, which is your basic financial statements. The city is very well-prepared for the audit. We supply an extensive list to them. Upon our arrival, they have a box of materials that are based on what our request was and we go through that and ask a lot of questions, spend a lot of time with your personnel. And I want to say that they're very thorough. They're very organized. They do a very nice job preparing for our audit. To overview the financial statements, pages one to eight is called Management's Discussion and Analysis. It is an excellent read. If you were to only focus on eight pages in this financial statement, those are the eight pages. It summarizes your operating results this year compared to prior year. It also summarizes your operating results compared to budget. Our opinion, unmodified opinion, is pages nine through 10. The main financial statements are 11 to 14. The format changed a little bit. OSC for cities that don't adopt GASB 34, which is bringing on your fixed assets in full accrual. This is the new reporting that was required. So we made those changes. Pages 15 to 52 are footnotes, which provide us a lot of detail in terms of what is incorporated in your financial statements. And pages 53 to 58 are required and other supplementary information, again, providing a little more detail to your financials. This year, the operating results, the general fund had originally budgeted and planned to use about 4.1 million of its unassigned fund balance, but it only needed 1.7 million to support your expenditures. Revenues were about 1.3 million over budget and your expenditures were under budget by about 4.7 million. So you were able to kind of balance your budget without having to use the full 4.1 million in the opening fund balance. You used approximately 1.25 million of your existing fund balance to settle your fire contracts. You also refinanced older serial bonds that will save roughly 1.5 million in future interest. You closed the year, your main operating fund obviously is your general fund. You closed the year with a fund balance of 13.5 million in the general fund and that was down about 1.7 million, again, as planned to be used towards the budget. But of that 13.5 million, 3.5 million is restricted, 3.7 million is assigned, mainly your purchase orders that carry over from one year to the next, and the remaining 6.2 million is unassigned or unreserved. This year, your capital projects increased from about 16.5 million in expenditures to about 24 million in expenditures. A lot of increases in Erie Boulevard, the water main system improvements, and some new fire truck leases. All your other operating funds, which is water, sewer, and golf, the main operating funds showed positive results and increases to your fund balance. I mentioned we also do a single audit. That's your federal programs and you spent roughly $7 million. And in that, we can't audit the same program every year. We have to rotate programs that are major. And so this year, we rotated. We did some federal highway monies, lead hazard mitigation, and also Section 108 was rotated on this year. So what happens is we look at the various laws and regulations over those federal programs and then we rotate them so that you get good coverage. Every three years, just about every federal program will be examined as part of the process. We also, as I said, New York State has a separate requirement for your Department of Transportation funds from New York State. And you spent roughly 1.7 million in that fund. In all cases, we found no material weaknesses, no significant deficiencies. Things are really on the up and up in terms of your internal controls. Your accounting staff works very hard for us. And we really didn't have findings this year. The findings we had a year ago were all resolved. The management took it upon themselves to make sure what we suggested they do, they did. So we call this a very clean audit. Again, good accounting, good personnel. I just wanted to thank Tony Curtis and Liz Nelson is one of our main contacts in the finance office for a job well done. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on the audit.
Just a couple of quick things. Thank you for the thorough audit. It's clear that our finance team has done an excellent job. And there doesn't appear to be any major recommendations or even minor ones for that part. So going forward, one thing I did take note of was the GASB 34. What exactly, what additional information might be might we gather from that that you might be interested?
What we would need to do, the city would need to hire an appraiser that would do an appraisal of your infrastructure, highways, bridges, and roads. And then we record that, start appreciating those assets along with... You have a good inventory system of your fixed assets, and you have obviously capital projects to talk about.
About one year spent in the various areas, like your Boulevard would be an example.
So it would require acquiring an appraisal of your assets and then bringing those assets onto your full accrual financial statements. All the other components are there. In other words, you've got all the long-term debt.
All the other components are there. It's just that fixed asset bringing those on.
All right, the next item is the Give Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Grant Board with Chief Clifford. Oh yeah, we do have to approve, accept it. Have a motion to accept. Second, by myself, all those in favor, we accept. Now Chief Clifford, thank you for the reminder.
Thank you. Everybody have a copy of the grant? I brought copies.
Okay, so this is a grant that our analysts worked on very diligently with both, it was a working group, but our analysts helped us put it together, overseen by Chief Seber. And the award this year for the county was 826,605, with the department receiving 377,781 dollars. We use that money to fund two give detectives and an analyst and also provide some overtime funding for focused active details. They include hotspot policing and focus deterrents. And we also send our analysts to some training seminars to stay up to date with D-Dax and risk terrain modeling analysis. There's also funding throughout the county, so the DA's office has some funding, the sheriff's office has some funding. And that puts together our, and probation, and that puts together our give team for the 2018-2019 year.
Chief, I see that in the budget, there is a line item for SEPTED, but zeroed out on, for all of them, for least progress for probation, DA. Is that something you're not focusing on any longer?
No, it's not that we're not focusing on. It just doesn't cost any money to implement the training. Everybody's been trained on it already. So as part of our community policing initiative, when we're out there, we discuss SEPTED and the benefits of it. Welcome.
And the next item on the agenda is also Chief Clifford, I believe, with the purchase of installation of emergency aftermarket equipment and 10 of our police vehicles.
Yes.
We received a bid for the installation of our equipment into our new vehicles. The bid that we accepted was from Specialized Vehicle Upfitting by Niskun Tire. He has done our outfitting for the last two years. He does excellent work. And this year, the bid came in at 58,786 dollars. And it's about almost a $28,000 savings from last year. And we were able to realize that by reusing some of the equipment from the vehicles we're taking out of service, such as the light bars, some of the console equipment. And I say that with, I discussed the savings for two different reasons, to show that we're looking to save money. But also, that might go down because as the equipment is taken out and put in, if it's not working properly, we're gonna have to spend some of it. So, but the idea here is to hopefully have it all work and we'll be able to save some of that money. And 10 vehicles this year that'll be outfitted, so we're on track to have them done probably within the next three months.
And even though we only received one bid this year, if my memory serves correctly, we've had multiple bids in the past year and Niskun has always been the wealthiest?
That's correct. And this year, we worked hard to try to get more bids. There just weren't a lot of interested parties out there. We resubmitted a second. We had to rebid it because of an error on the first bid on both Niskun Tire's part, the single bidder, and our part. So we resubmitted it for another week and we still only received one response. But on the resubmission, we actually increased the radius of who could have bid and we still only got one. I will note that we are working closely with the county on their RFP process they're using for the vehicles. And if we find it beneficial, we might join in with them next year. It was just too soon to do it this year, so that's why we went with doing it ourselves.
Comparing Apple Tows over the course of the last, I think it's three years now, does the pricing that they gave kind of compare to past years? As far as like the different components of the pricing? I know it's different because vehicles are...
I set a pretty high bar on this RFP and he exceeded my expectations, so the savings that are presented here to me are very good.
No, I know, because I think... Was there, just a question. Was there a problem in his billing process? Because he said he had, I know when I talked, when we had a little problem getting paid, he said last year. Was there something wrong with his billing? Was there a problem with that? With him getting paid in a time of cash?
Not that I'm aware of. He submitted his bills and we went through the normal checks and balances processes. And I guess he was not happy with that process, but we told him that once we verified everything, we'd pay it. So, but everything's good to go. We have a, we had a new fleet manager in place. So working out the processes of him verifying everything other than just taking the word for it. Slowed down things for maybe a week or two, but it wasn't anything out of the ordinary for a wait time.
So, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I'll call the committee on administrative efficiency. We have a couple of items before us to see. The first one, call for a public hearing on fireworks enforcement ordinance. And Mr. Pallmanni and Mr. Verin who handed it. So John, you want to start off first?
Sure. As we're well aware of, fireworks has been an issue within the city for a number of years now. Trying to find a way to hopefully alleviate some of the issue that we've been having in the various neighborhoods. And looking through code, working with the legal department, we've come up with the following as an ordinance for the city. Basically, giving some teeth to beef, or whatever you want to call it, to our police department to enforce the law. So basically, this would provide a fee, a fine I should say, not to exceed $250 for each individual launch of fireworks constituting a separate offense. The fireworks themselves and any paraphernalia with it would be confiscated and subject to forfeiture upon conviction after trial. And we're looking to hopefully have this help in the enforcement of the fireworks issue within the city.
Mr. Pallmanni summarized everything there. Something that we need to address. It's a problem, especially in the holiday season. To work to be able to address these problems.
And again, I looked at it as well with Mr. Pallmanni, the New York State penal law actually just lists it as a violation. So here we're really taking it a step further, really, as Pallmanni said, to address it with not only a fine, but confiscation or confiscating the fireworks and any paraphernalia that's associated with it. And of course, we've been talking with Chief Clifford as well to try to making sure that we do get some enforcement out there. So when a resident does call, we do have to get some sort of an exact address or location. But again, it's been dominant in Mount Pleasant and the Hamilton Hill area. I know Bellevue has had its share of fireworks as well. And again, all our officers have been able to do in the past is just go there and kind of tell them, you know, we can't fire fireworks. But now we're really gonna add some strong legislation to this, I think, with issuing that ticket with a fine, again, up to $250, a court appearance, at the same time possessing, confiscating the fireworks and any launching paraphernalia that's attached to it. Any questions on this? Again, we'll call them. So let me just real quick, so with the holiday season coming up again on the fourth, so what we're looking to do is we're gonna call for the public hearing on the next Monday and actually vote on it on that same thing so that this resolution can take effect immediately for this year. And we can do that. That has been done in the past and we will certainly do that. We need to do this, yes.
This is that with dismay because it doesn't really give us a good chance to hear the comments.
And again, we can caucus. We can actually call for a caucus and a recess after a public hearing if we do deem that necessary, counsel. That if after hearing from the public, we feel that we're not comfortable with legislation, we can actually call for recess and come down and have a caucus and discuss it further, make a determination if we want to before. But I'll tell you, with so many people coming to the rail and all of us at this table receiving numerous phone calls from all our residents, I can't see any objection coming to the rail. Again, we make that discrepancy here, you know, for municipalities, fair associations, amusement parks, organizations, to be exempt from that. Just having to get their permit, which they've always done in the past, which is $50. So we talk about summer nights, Union College, the other organizations that do shoot fireworks here in the city, again, with permits. And again, we're working closely with Chief Clifford and his staff to make sure this is enforceable. Because again, as many pieces of legislation we put forward, we don't have the enforcement at the other end. It's certainly not gonna work. So I think this is gonna be a good piece. As Mr. Pallmanni said, we're gonna put some teeth into this and let's see if we can really get this thing done. Any other comments, Ms. Ford?
I have a question. B where it says that persons who violate provisions of this section. So a person actually has to be caught after shooting off fireworks in order for them to be charged and violating?
It would have to be caught doing it. Witness fireworks go off in the backyard, walk back, there's one person standing. By having, believe that there's a person that, go back there, it's a party, might not be able to catch the person.
So using that example, if there is a group of people back there, does that mean everybody gets arrested or no one gets arrested?
Well, we're gonna have this law out, the homeowner, ask them to...
Again, it's a head-to-head. You all know. I mean, they've closed off sections of the streets and have just shot them off right in the middle of the area. It was on video. We saw it on video a few times, right? So even at the lease case scenario, if the officers show up and there's no bodies there, at least we can confiscate fireworks. With that piece of legislation, at least take them from them and do that. So at least, you know, put some kind of hold on us. Again, the county rescinded their piece there to sell these sparklers in the county. But again, those are only sparklers. Those weren't the illegal fireworks that we're talking about, the projectiles that are going. And of course, this includes firecrackers as well, you know, the M80s and cherry bombs, whatever that they call them now. I mean, we're just not talking launching type. We're talking, you know, the fireworks in addition. So I think this is very, very good. I think it's worthwhile. It's a good step forward, I think, as a council and as the mayor's in support and Chief Clifford's in support and hopefully his council's support. Mr. Reagan?
I think if we talked about this before, the key to everything is enforcement. We're going through that music, I thought, of Chief Clifford. We also have that loud music. We can confiscate...
Boom boxes.
The boom boxes or whatever it is, because there was a big problem in Mount Pleasant this weekend. Santa Fe Street, Waltham Street, went to 4:30 in the morning. And that just is not acceptable, that that's allowed to go on. People aren't allowed to be awake. A 96-year-old friend of mine, you know, she was awakened by that. So I would like to see that carry on with these quality of light issues also with loud music. Let's confiscate the equipment. The DJ equipment, let's take it. And after the court date, then they can either get it back or I think that's, there's a provision.
This is actually patterned after the noise ordinance law. I gotta thank Mr. Palatico for his efforts and...
Thank you very much. Again, it's a very good point. Again, just the strict enforcement. All right, so again, we'll be calling for the public hearing on Monday and then hopefully the council will be able to vote on it by roll call after the public hearing during the council proceedings. All right, so I need a motion, I guess, on this, right? On the public hearing, is that correct?
Make it.
So Mr. Pallmanni and I will second that. I'll favor say aye.
You? I'm sorry?
But I'd also recommend you pass the ordinance out of committee as well, so that way...
So we get it all done?
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Thank you very much. And I will second that. Thank you, Mr. Palatico. I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then we're gonna review the ordinance amending the administrative of the city. Can I do relate to inspections of multiple dwellings? And we did get a copy of that today. Mr. Palatico sent it out to us. Carl, do you have a talk to that, just very briefly? That's the chapter of multiple dwellings inspection. Do you have a copy of it?
What it does really, it codifies the state law that you have to inspect certain properties one to three years. It was not by certain events or city code. Makes it not only a state law, but also a city code violation, what's in there. So everybody knows that it's an requirement on these properties who are getting inspected more than once every three years through a rent certificate program already. But if there were some that didn't end up getting inspected there now, they'll...
You know, so I have a question for you and I realize it's crossed out here. What about dorms? Are dorm, the houses on Suchard Union College, all the houses over there, would they now, or have they been included in these inspections? Or I believe they should be now included in these inspections. Is that correct? I mean, there's so many properties over there.
When, when you have dorms that are owned by schools, sometimes a little different under the law, schools are treated differently to student housing. We ran into this issue with the dormitory that was built, dormitories down by SCC where it actually wasn't owned by the school. So they were subjected to some regulation that they wouldn't be... I can't give you every detail about it, but that's...
And what about the houses in that area though? Like on University Place and Seward Place and all those, would they now come under this inspection piece? I mean, they're not really not dorms, but they're housing for college students. And again, you've got, as your criteria here says, what, three or more, right? Three or more families that are independently of each other. We certainly have those situations around Union College campus.
I can look into that and give you a definite answer.
We can.
If something changes, if they're owned by the school.
I agree with that. I mean, Union College needs to be held to the same standard as everybody else. They've stayed and basically lived off a lot of our services for a long time, so.
And again, not only the college-owned property, but privately-owned property around there too. I mean, a lot of those are rented out to college students up here. I think those are ones that I have concerns with as well. You know, are they up to coasting? Well, if you can take a look at that, that would certainly be appreciated. Again, we're calling, is that a public hearing, correct? No, we're just reviewing that ordinance. Yes.
It doesn't mention here at all. So would hotels come under, motel, since we have so many... And our investment decision, they come under this at all at that...
Something separate.
Is there a way we can start taking a look at that? And then we can discuss it and start, you know, I hear from a lot of people who unfortunately have to be housed there for whatever they're going through at that time and... Well, perhaps, but someone needs to take a look at some provisions of this property.
Is correct. The motel is a separate section.
That's not the city, the state?
No. Both the city and also the county has it for their place.
All right, so do you need a motion on this? So need a motion on this, Mr. Pallmanni? Second, I'll favor say aye. Thank you. Need a motion, nothing done before? I'm sorry?
It's June, so we're halfway through the budget and we haven't heard anything lately about the towing contract and the RFP and all that. So I was just gonna ask, city update on where we are, because every year we say, you know, when are we gonna realize those revenues? And we haven't. So I just was wondering if Mr. Palatico could... And we haven't, so I just was wondering if Mr. Palatico could tell us where we are with the towing contract, RFP process, and agreements with towing companies, and how we move forward on that.
Moving internally in the police department, great, pleased with, still not going, complicated, backfired.
Is there any projection on when we might start to see revenue?
Right after the Oak Street.
Okay, can you tell me exactly where we are with the RFP process? Have we gone out to, for proposals? Have we had bidders? Are we in negotiations with anyone?
Interviewing, going through the criteria with the proposed vendors to see if they meet the criteria to establish contractual relations.
Okay. Hoping for more, it's been about, I don't know, three and a half years now. So to have regular updates, that would help.
Oh, fine, he said bye here.
Bye, yeah.
All right, very good. Anything else to come before administrative?
I have one, just because we talked about it, it never went anywhere, so I'd like to bring it up again. We got to get into the paving, rear yards, you know, with the runoff, there's a big runoff problem. I keep getting complaints from the same people, and I turned over to Fred Peddingale, and I don't know if he inspects or whatnot, but they're not even following the setbacks. I think there has to be at least two or three for the setback, I think, that's not happening. So if we could get it on the agenda for discussion, get somebody from engineering.
Get back on that, yes, we'll get on there in two weeks if you don't mind.
Does that happen a few sessions ago and it never came back?
Right, right. I think Crystal's going to do something for us, and we have heard, I mean, they've smarted out this.
So I think we have to get a handle on that, because it's creating a problem for some joint neighbors.
Yes, drainage and all that.
May I just send you a picture, his backyard is flooded, he was sweating, it wasn't ever flooded before, so something.
Pretty far, so why don't we let him?
Yeah, let me, I want to touch base with Mr. Wong. Can I have?
In two weeks, we'll get that done, all right? Thank you, Mr. Reagan, appreciate that. All right, motion adjourned, Mr. Paul Menni, I'll second that, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Call to other health and recreation, first item, municipal golf course, parent, child, summer offer.
Yes, I have, I have Matt Daly with us here today. So was that the, did you pick the US Open champion or what? Did not, you did not, huh?
No, wish I did, it was interesting.
It was good shooting.
Very good.
Very good.
So the proposal that's on the table right now is, kind of comes on the heels of, you know, the US Open, and schools starting to get out of session. We just had our Schenectady championship over the weekend at our course. About 80 players on the men's side and nine on the women's side, both increases from last year. And, you know, it's kind of exciting moving forward because we're trying to get more junior golfers on the.
Is the mic now? Yeah, it's just for TV.
Okay. They probably wouldn't like my voice anymore. So yeah, we're trying to get more junior golfers, you know, in attendance at the golf course. Every facility is looking back to that, that's the future. So, you know, I just brought a couple of T-sheets here, random days and Saturdays in May. And on the first page, you'll see that it's pretty heavily attended. But then after 12:30, it starts to taper off. Every facility I've ever worked at has been a problem. Saturday afternoons are just barely, very poorly attended, family time, there's other things going on. So I thought, there was a gentleman that plays golf at our facility, Tom McKeerden, who actually brought this idea to me, that I was a great at these, thinking about doing like parent-child, where the, you know, child plays for free on Saturday afternoons if they're accompanied by a parent or guardian. So I started giving some thought, and then actually he reached out to Mr. Kozier, wanted to work further with that. And so I thought it was a pretty good idea. It's a good way to get kids on the golf course, it's a good way to possibly drive some revenue up that we might normally wouldn't have gotten. The key to it all is to get the kids there, they have to be accompanied by a parent or guardian. And they have, they have to pay a parent or guardian debt. So essentially, we're allowing kids to play for free in that, just a very short time period, maybe any time after 1 o'clock on Saturdays, where it's our quiet time, and then, you know, of course, we get the revenue from parents. But it gives them a little more bonding time, gets kids on the golf course, they can see what we have to offer. So I thought it might be a good opportunity, at least give it a try, one of our quiet times. Any questions?
Yep, so again, thank you, Matt, for bringing this to us, and again, the mayor for hopefully supporting us here as well. I was shocked, first of all, when, when he told me that Saturday afternoons are dead time in the golf course. I really couldn't believe it, I just thought weekends were packed solid. But when he showed us the data here, I mean, it clearly shows that it's Saturday afternoons, the course is almost empty. Especially comes, as we talked about, Saratoga time, where the track season is approaching.
Right. Really tapered off.
It just tapered because it's, again, the Saturday of giveaway dates at the track. So we thought just a great opportunity here for, to get our youngsters involved. And I really want to expand on it even next year, we're talking about next year, to partner with perhaps the Boys and Girls Club to bring some of our inner-city youth to come down and participate in some golf clinics with some of our coaches and stuff, and really work with Shane Vargie over there. And again, we can help youth through a little bit of funding, transportation, get them there. But again, just to get our kids involved in a sport that really, unfortunately, we need to really boost. And I think a great way to get our youngsters involved, and I just hope for the council's support. Again, I think we're talking 17 and under, correct, Matt?
Seventeen and under.
Seventeen and under for the ages, so we're really not talking college kids, we're talking 17 and under, again.
Just so you know, our current junior rate right now is only 17, so it's not really a big hit to the golfers, you say they'll give up that. And it's a very limited time, it's just maybe any time after 1, any time after 2. In that quiet zone, till we close, which is 6:30 is the last.
So, you know, we're talking a five, five-and-a-half hour period.
As anybody, especially you, you're familiar with the golf business, revenues are down across the board, and.
Not at our facility.
No, and I was just, I was just about to say that, this is a huge moneymaker for the city. It'd be great to get kids involved, get them into golf, get them used to playing at uni and hopefully playing there for decades to come. So, and, and I'm following up with Mr. Kozier's thoughts of, you know, in the years' future. You know, there's the first tee program, which you're well aware of, but maybe we can tap into.
We actually partnered with the junior program in July, with the first tee program, they're excellent.
Available that, you know, maybe we can tap into, but this is a great first start. And, you know, I can attest, Saturday afternoons are dead at the golf course. And, you know, I think one of the reasons people don't take their kid to play with them is they're concerned about holding up their golfers, pace of play. It's not a real concern on a Saturday afternoon, and it's a great way to introduce kids to a game that they, quite frankly, can play the rest of their life, so. And secondly, congratulations, of course, I've heard nothing but positive feedback that it's in excellent shape. We continue to have one of the best facilities in, in the area, so.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Go ahead, Ms..
Ms. Kelly, how, how would we market this to?
Well, that's a great question. We actually do have some money in our advertising line for the golf course, so I thought maybe we could branch out to the Gazette, obviously on social media, put it on our website. Pete Dowd, he was a sports writer for the Times Union, he's looking always to do articles in his and out towards that end of the area. So we can reach out to two of the main newspaper lines for sure.
And again, we got to talk about your new website, the address over there is.
Is M U N I, muni.golf.
M U N I dot golf, so great website, I don't know if all like. Well, because muni, I'm thinking M U N Y, right, but it's, it's with an I, so very, and it's a great. Pretty easy to remember, and it's dot golf.
Well, after Mr. Piazza passed away, unfortunately, on our old website, when, when he passed, everything kind of went with him. He had all the passwords and everything to our old domain. And so we were trying to get control of that, and they weren't relinquishing that information to us. So we decided to go forth and build a new one. I actually had submitted that to the mayor for review, and Mr. Kozier just saw it for the first time the other day. So we're trying to get that up and running, but it's much more user-friendly, better pictures, shows a little bit more of the current stuff we're doing, the new projects we've done on the golf course, and some old pictures, a lot of old photos. Talks a little bit about the history of the course, which is very important to us there. I mean, opened in 1935, it's an old golf course, WPA project, you know, and. What's that? Yeah, yeah, it's pretty, it's pretty neat, the. Yeah, oh yeah, you know, the new parking project, we have, the whole parking lot is a little disarray right now. One of the paving projects for the golf course is to redesign the lot, make it a little bit more efficient. A new cart staging area, a new bag drop, so when players come in, it'll be much more professionally run. There's actually more of an entranceway coming in, landscaping is going to be much more presentable. So when players come in, it's like they get a hug, rather than driving in and going, I'm not sure where I'm supposed to go here. So it's just kind of transformed, and a lot of the players that came in this weekend aren't necessarily muni regulars. There was a lot of players from country clubs. And I can't even tell you how many times I heard just how great the condition of the course was, and, you know, your greens are better than ours, and we're paying all this money for membership, if we ever leave, we're coming over here. I mean, our numbers are just steadily going up in a, in an area where the numbers on everywhere else is going down. So it's something to be proud of, for sure, all those projects are starting to pay off. So it's definitely money well spent.
Reflect it well on the audit too.
That's always good. No, but I would love to have, have you come up anytime, so please, just anytime you just want to stop up, you're never going to be a bother. You know, just see the kind of stuff that's going on up there, it's a special place, for sure. I mean, it's very near and dear to my heart, as you know, I get a little emotional about it sometimes, but it's a great place.
Are you got a question? Can I have a? Okay, thank you.
Next item, a recommendation appointing Daniel T. Malloy to the municipal golf course advisory committee.
Yes, assuming it's in our package, we got a letter of recommendation from the mayor to appointing Mr. Malloy to the advisory committee, golf course advisory.
That's one vacancy, there's some others that are, the terms have expired, we're going through to update those. They continue to serve, although they're successive qualified, so Mr. White's expressed that he's just part of it. So in turn, move into that, ask your favorite consideration. I also saw on the list, like, Winston signed up whatever Saturday, so he was out playing golf.
Very good.
We'll tell him.
Can I have a motion? Second, all in favor?
I'm here too.
Yeah, so am I.
No, the committee is Mr. He, me, and you.
Yes.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. All right, all in favor?
There you go.
Any other business for Paulson, right?
Because you're confused.
I'll second.
Oh. Call to other public safety, first item, exterior permit fee waiver. You should have a package in front of you there. I did ask for the two reports, I mean, both of us will have a look at it, the report, the permits for the exterior, permits for the roof. So if I can give a bit of summary of this program, last year, last year, a total of 201 permits was pulled for exterior work, and we waived a total of $11,295. That's an increase of 95 permits from 2016, and that's for exterior work only. And the roofing, we had 91 permits that was pulled, total waive was $9,100. That's an increase of 45 permits from 2016. Overall, last year, we give total waive $20,295. So we can see that there's an impact that people are utilizing as incentive to pull permit for both exterior work and roofing. Unable to tap into this here. What I'm proposing this year is that we only waive the application fee, and remain the same as of the last, the last prior two years. And we're capping it at $25,000 instead of $50,000 last year. So maximum permit value will be $25,000. And we're seeking to waive the $2,080 fee of $56 for exterior work and $100 for roof permit. And this is for a period of July 1st to September the 30th. And this is for residential property, 1 to 4 units. Owner-occupied and rental property after 4 units. They should have, and this permit is valid for six months, and work must be completed within their proposed period. If not, they will have to renew the permit and pay full fee. Go ahead.
I think it's an excellent program, I'm looking through the data, it appears it's a smart move to move it down to $25,000. It's like there's only one permit from last year, it was actually more than that. We talk about neighborhood revitalization all the time. This is short-term cost, but a long-term benefit to the city and to the residents. And this is, I think, an excellent program, and thank you for continuing to bring this back. I think it's something that is very positive for all of us.
And also, I mean, I look through this here, and I look at it, one, one individual, actually, $48,000. All the rest are below $25,000. So it makes sense to have it there, cap it down at $25,000. And it's good, and we talk about quality of life, and this is an incentive to our neighbors that can pull the permit, do the work, and we give them a little bit of incentive to help them along.
And again, Paul, Mr. Paul Menni, I mean, we're talking about total wage fees of $20,000, but if you look at the total investment here, it's almost $1.4 million of investment on that $20,000 permit waiver fee. And I think that's a great sign that, that people are looking to invest in their homes and invest in our city. And again, we're only losing that one, you know, by lowering to $25,000 rate, really, it was only affected one permit. But again, $1.4 million on $20,000, I think is a great, great sureness.
Well, I mean, I, I wouldn't say that we're losing, I mean, we're gaining more.
As I'm saying, right, we're gaining, but he given a main sensor that.
Look at the neighborhood and look at the investment around there, the property stars, property value, you know.
So are, when people are, when they require for taxes to pay a state, how does that work?
Yes, we did that last year, yes. Can I add that back here? Sorry. We, we had that last year as one of the requirements, so I can add that back here, taxes, yeah.
And additionally, how are we making sure that the information that we're passing through here to the council gets down to code enforcement? I think there was an issue where people came in one year where they didn't, code enforcement didn't know what was supposed to happen, so.
Yes, I did have meetings with Commissioner Iden, talk about this and that. So once this is through the council, we will discuss it with Mr. Wong and the rest of the staff there, and make sure that this is implemented. And I think I have to commend them, they did a good job last year, because prior, there was so much confusion to get this off. But last year, we can look at the numbers and see that there was great improvement, and to make sure that people are actually tapping into this. So we'll do that, we'll have to outreach and make sure. And the one thing Mr. Paul Menni and I did last year too was more outreach than the neighborhood does. So kind of sell this out to the neighborhood, let them know that this is available, so that they can come in, pull their permits, and be able to ask for it. And the staff is not only asking for this, the staff is actually letting the people know, but there is a waiver period, so they don't need to pay. So we're doing that, thanks. Any other question?
Motion, correct?
Okay, second, all in favor? Aye, thank you. Next item is certificate of use renewal form. I just want to bring this, not, not really discuss it more, but bring this to the attention that I want to commend Mr. Palatico, Mr. Iden, and the rest of the staff working there. What happened in the past, we, we are using the one form for new business applicant, application, at the same time, the same form for renewal. So it's kind of complicated sometimes because the people have to submit the documents over and over, make it complicated so. over, make it complicated, so. We have calls, we, you know, and last year, we started this, and got some calls, we worked with Mr. Feltico to address it, and this year, calls again, and, you know, so we're going to address it, and Mr. Feltico came up with a new form, which is only three pages compared to the other form, several pages, and make it more user-friendly, people come in here, they don't need to resubmit the documents over and over. And this is very good, I want to thank you for putting this in place. Just a question, are we going to be using this as a, like, effective immediately?
Yeah.
Yes, so this is already with enforcement for them to use this form?
Sure, should be, we just disseminated it out, that the, if you updated form out of the, the law.
Yeah, this is really good, because a lot of people have been calling and complaining about why they have to submit the, coal plant and all, so, they don't need, they don't think it's needed, and we just want to, not to make it hard, so, to do business. And this is a prime example of how we're making things friendly. I want to thank you for that.
The other items, there's a question?
Is there a topic about?
Yes, I can give it, sorry. The next item I would like to be discussing executive session, it has to do with a sale and a contract. Any other business for health, right? Public safety? Can I have a more?
A chair. No, recess, go recess.
Second, all in favor?
Everything else is the same. Meanwhile, her executive session, excuse me.
Yes, that is correct, so why don't you just call for a motion? That makes sense, right? Let's just do that.
I'll just do an executive session.
Second, discuss.
Eighteen, nineteen, Butler Street.
That's the three fields.
Everything else.
And everything else on each.
Claims. Can you just say why? Mr. Why are you going to second? Why it's wired?
Again, we're discussing a sale and a contract of, of properties, and, and we also have a claims with an injury claim as well. Those are all executive session.
Why are they?
Mr. Feltico?
Exceptions to the open meeting law, contract negotiation, the old property sales, rancher's lost construction claim settlements, which is a hundred points.
Thank you.
Also, it's good to hear you're not me. What are the, what was the yard seen fireworks?
Oh, the fireworks, John's going. Wasn't in the packet, Andrew, wasn't that in the packet? Our apologies. What's the other one you're looking for?
Most of them.
Here, you can have mine. Thanks, buddy, bye-bye. Thank you. All right, so we got to shut it off here.